I would like to call this meeting to order. It should be noted that the Board of Education members received their agendas several days prior to the actual meeting, thus they've had considerable opportunity to study it and ask questions. The Board will hold their next regular meeting Tuesday, November 19th, 2024, right here in the Woodruff High School library. Guests and participants are asked to silence their cell phones and put them away for the duration of the meeting. Roll call, please.
This is Glover.
Here.
This is Effernan.
Here.
Mr. Carlo?
Here.
Mr. Lydic?
Here.
This is Mark.
Here.
Please stand and join me in the penitentiary. The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this point, I have no public participation. That'll move us into the approval of the agenda. I get a motion, please.
I'll move.
Wait a second. Roll call.
This is Effernan.
Aye.
This is Martin.
Aye.
This is Glover.
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mr. Lydic?
Aye.
And that brings us to superintendent reports.
All right. Good evening. How's everybody doing? Good? Good. Well, since the last time we met, Mr. Morgan, our assistant superintendent, facilitated the first cellphone committee meeting. And that was really more of a foundational meeting, reviewed our current policy, model policy, some of the literature that's out, and some of the research around it. So from what I hear, I wasn't there, it was conversation, and the next meeting is November 14th. And any questions, anybody has, Mr. Morgan would be happy to answer those if you wanted to reach out and talk with him. Other legislation, we're also navigating Senate Bill 29. Has anybody heard about that yet? So we'll be hearing a lot more about it. So when it first went into effect, nobody really thought about how it was going to impact us as a school district or any school district in Ohio. I know that's probably no surprise to anybody here at this table. At the core, it's about protecting student privacy. So that's a good thing. There's just some language in it that is still up for interpretation, and there are a number of groups working on it right now, so we anticipate there being some more changes. But right now, our legislators are on recess, so not much is happening, so when they get back. But in the time being, October 24th is our target date. So we're required to send out a notification to our families just explaining our general monitoring. So we're going to share that. That might be a little confusing, just because we've not done something like that before. And then come August 1st, we send out an annual notification, and that would happen every year, and it includes a list of every single online program we use in district. You know, Mr. Unix has been really busy working on those user agreements with each of those companies, because we have to have a copy of that, and it has to meet specific criteria within that legislation. Mr. Morgan and him have been working on the list that we have, and something new for our teachers, which we're going to be talking with them more about, is it takes away that trialing when they see something like that might really supplement the curriculum. They've had an opportunity to check that out and then present that as, hey, you know, we'd really like to use this in our classroom. Now they won't be able to do that, so it'll have to go through an approval process first. We're hoping that's part of this legislation that's taken out. We have a little bit more flexibility there. If not, though, we're going to have a good system in place to still encourage that creativity, but also be mindful of what we're using in district. Some more information to come on that. Questions? No, right now? I'll keep sharing as we get those updates. I also wanted to share information about Timbertop, too. So that is our community that was really impacted by the floods that we had in August. Canyon Brook Drive washed out, and it really creates a challenge for our district come those winter months. Right now, we are, we have a bus going down a very steep hill down Canyon Parkway, and we have to back the bus up. So we have very seasoned drivers that are very skilled, and so we've been able to have safe passage, but come inclement weather, it's going to be nearly impossible for us to do that. So Tom and I have been meeting with city officials at Akron, Cogga Falls, we've met with people from the county, and we keep coming up with the same barrier. It's privately owned property. So there's not a lot they can do. We're still continuing those discussions. I've reached out to the private property owner, still trying to make contact, because we need to make sure that our students and our staff are safe making that terrain. We have about 240 students that live in that area. That's over 10% of our entire student population. So not everybody lives in the Canyon Brook area, but it's still, it's still a large number of students, so I'll be continuing to update you as we receive more information on that. Does anybody else have any thoughts, or have you heard anything else about that?
What would the alternative be if you can't, if they can't fix the road? Or they have to come down to like a...
Well, we're, we're talking now about, do we have the capacity to shuttle? Any kids? We, we, one of our ideas was partnering with Metro to see if they had like a large bus. I don't know if that's going to be an option at all, but that would be large enough, and then we wouldn't be using our staff, which we're going to be light on. The other part is just delays. So if we have to come in at a delayed time, we could also have our team go in and salt, too. It's not always the best conditions for salting in there, and that would help with the safety piece. But definitely, the way, the way that we're looking at it right now, we're going to have delays.
Yeah, because the road's very narrow, and the largest population of people is at the bottom.
And it is, it's a very, it's a steep hill going down.
Only way in and out, and they can't...
Right now, because the back road, got a circle K is washed out.
How do the people get, their cars are small enough that they can get up and down easily?
With, with great care.
Easier than a bus.
Yeah. What about a smaller bus?
I think that's what she's talking about with the shuttle idea, maybe we can get some shuttles down.
And then even if we had a main bus, but then also like with our fleet, every bus has a route, so we don't really have an extra bus. So that's why we would still have a delay, but that might be our option. So we're working with the Department of Education and workforce, too, letting them know what our situation is, because we're not preventing kids getting to school. I mean, literally, we have a safety issue.
Is there legal obligation if they don't properly maintain their roads and there's an accident on their private property? Aren't they legally at fault for...
You would think so, right?
We could file a suit against them if something happens?
I, I don't know. I'd have to find out more information about that.
Maybe we should talk to them about that, too.
Could definitely do that.
And there's no way we can ask parents to bring them up, bring them up to the top, or...
We can certainly ask that question.
You know, maybe even carpool. Few parents could pick up kids and bring them up to the top.
I don't have a huge car, but I'd definitely be willing to, right across the street.
Yeah, because the feasibility of having it done by winter is probably not good. Even if you get the owner to agree.
It snowed yesterday.
Yeah, because the pavement and everything is...
They, they have to rebuild that section.
And you can only do that in certain times of the year, and so...
That's where we're at right now, but it can be good ideas to explore, too. And that carpooling, it can, you know, we'll definitely reach out to the community and just let them know, hey, we're in need, we've got to come together and support each other.
Yeah.
All right, well, happier news. We have student recognition tonight. Mrs. Harrington's going to come up, and she's going to talk about our fifth graders, but actually what they accomplished in fourth grade.
That's right. I am here. Thank you so much, Mrs. Ost, and I am so excited to be here with all of our families and students, and also Mrs. Noonan, the fourth grade teacher who brought this to my attention. I have to give her full credit, because we celebrate so many things at the elementary school, and tonight, we're going to recognize three students who actually achieved a perfect score on the Math Ohio State test in fourth grade, which, in my experience, I didn't even know that was possible to, I mean, not to miss one. And Mrs. Noonan inquired and sort of sent an email, and she was like just making sure about the scores, and we, and so she brought this to my attention. I thought, oh my gosh, I have three students all in that grade to all achieve that. I thought, it is worth our first recognition as the elementary school. So can I please have Scarlett Moore, Graham McElhany, and Ben Geiger come on up? So the thing is, and everybody hears about the state test, but the state tests are really intended to measure mastery of the standards. And when you've achieved a level of mastery of standards, and there are a lot of standards in fourth grade, and those, that content goes deep, right, Mrs. Noonan? And it's very dense. And so for the students not only to have achieved that, but also to achieve mastery at such a young age, it really makes me so excited about what not only is in store for them in the future, but also for our other students, because if this is attainable, then it clearly is a good indicator that our math program is really doing great things. So I wanted to congratulate them. I also wanted to congratulate our parents, too, because in partnership, we can't do it without you, and also their teachers. So thank you all so much. Do you guys want to say anything in particular about math or learning? I, I warned them that Mrs. Ost might have some questions.
I want to know, did you feel like it was hard when you were taking it? Did it seem easy?
Did it feel hard?
Do any of them want to become a school treasurer?
They want to be a treasurer?
She'd shadow you.
Are the tests in general hard for you? Like when you take regular tests in school, are they hard? Are they easy? Medium? Very humble, a very humble group, too.
Well, that is all point and accomplishment.
Yeah, all really good characteristics, great kids. We're so proud of you. So congratulations.
Can we have them do, if we come up and shake some hands?
Oh, yeah. You're ready for the hand. There we go. Good job. All right, we're going to take a picture, too.
Everybody stand.
We're going to take a picture. We're going to take a photo and step backwards. There you go.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
And this part of our meeting, we usually let our families go. We know you have other things going on. Of course, you're always welcome to stay, but we will not judge if you get up and leave, so we'll take a five-minute recess.
Yeah, my oldest son, he scored a perfect score on the Math, the state math test. It was the first time. He's 20, 19, 20, American, and he, they got him on the news. And he's one of the oldest kids.
That is impressive, because the questions are not easy. I can't even do fifth grade math right now.
I know, right?
I was going to ask them if they had to count on their fingers.
I could use ChatGPT. Like I think you could take a picture of their worksheet, and then ChatGPT will spit out instructions for what to do to get through it.
My oldest, like, used to have to help the two younger ones, because I'm like, what is that? I don't even know what that is.
And Victor's graduating, so I don't know what I'll do next year.
I can get to the answer, but not the way they get to the answers. Seems like they have to have this big, long thing.
Yeah, they do.
Big matrices.
Yeah, and lattice.
All these steps.
Yeah.
Are you good?
Yeah, that's all I have for you.
There we go. All right, then we're going to move over to the treasurer's report.
Okay, so a few years ago, the state of Ohio had given the opportunity for school districts to write some security grants for their buildings, and we just finished off those grants, so I just want to let everyone know. We received grants of $267,118 to cover all three of our buildings, and with that, we purchased driver's license scanners, cameras, radios, just to make our buildings a little more secure. So it was really a nice thing between all the principals, specifically Jesse Hosford and Eric Unix, to write these grants and get them funded for us, so they did a nice job with that. Also want to throw a little shout out to Sierra Simmons, writing a donor's choice grant that got funded for some OT supplies. Our elementary does a phenomenal job in writing these donor's choice grants, and I, every now and then have to come back to you guys to accept official donations, so I just want to, you know, send something out to her. Also, you know, you will be seeing coming up another donation from Cascade Auto Subaru. Every year, they donate $500 to six teachers in the elementary, and it's really kind of a nice thing that they do. I'm sorry, Mrs. Harrington's out in the hall right now to hear this, but it's really kind of a nice thing, a local business doing that for our kids. The other thing, I just want to let anyone, anyone listening, there is some proposed legislation to help property owners with their taxes, because, you know, everyone in the state of Ohio over the past couple of years, and some counties are going to be going through it again next year, you know, we've seen the 20, 30, 40, some property taxing, or property tax, excuse me, property valuation increases, and thus some higher taxes. So I don't know whether they're going to go through, but there's some proposed legislation right now to increase the homestead exemptions for seniors, also possibly to freeze the property taxes for seniors that earn less than $50,000 annually, and also potential tax rebates for any homeowners whose taxes actually exceed 5% of their income. Now, whether these go through or not, I don't know, but it's something that will help all of our, our property owners out there, so. Mr. Lydic, that's all I have for you this evening.
Can I get a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
This is Martin.
Aye.
This is Glover.
Aye.
This is Effernan.
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mr. Lydic?
Aye.
All right, brings us to Board of Education reports, correspondence updates, and committee reports. Anybody? Six consent resolution. Get a motion, please.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
This is Effernan.
Aye.
This is Glover.
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mr. Lydic?
Aye.
This is Martin.
Aye.
Brings us to seven personnel, one through three. I will move.
I'll second.
Discussion.
We are thrilled. We are fully staffed with our title services at the middle school, so each grade level has their own interventions, intervention is there for reading, and, and then the other list is for our mentors.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Lydic?
Aye.
This is Martin?
Aye.
This is Glover?
Aye.
This is Effernan?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Brings us to B, classified staff, one through eight. Get a motion, please.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Well, Kristen Teller is resigning. She's leaving us for another opportunity she wants to pursue, and, and I'm sorry, I just realized that I'm amplified on this, which I feel is the first time I've noticed that. All right, sorry about that. Jeff Jackson, he resigned earlier. He actually moved to another state, but he still has his house here, so when he's home visiting, he's going to serve for us. So it's really great. We're, we're thrilled to have a sub, a bus driver. And then, you know, number four is just a contractual move. That's just 15 trial periods over, so it moves to a continuing contract. And then the next items are for substitutes. And then we have one of our bus drivers who's participating in our PBIS, that Positive Behavior Intervention Supports Team. And I cannot forget to mention number seven. One of our high school students is actually going to be working at our elementary school now, so after his day is over at the high school, he's coming over and supporting custodial needs as a substitute right now.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
This is Effernan?
Aye.
This is Glover?
Aye.
Mr. Lydic?
Aye.
This is Martin?
Aye.
Brings us to C, supplemental contracts, one, one through three. Get a motion, please.
I'll move.
Second. Discussion.
So just bring your attention to Kelly Sasevich. She is stepping down to focus more on girls' golf, but she's still going to be available during the softball season, too, to help out whenever she can. And, I mean, the other ones, these are just getting us prepared for winter sports.
Roll call, please.
This is Glover?
Aye.
This is Martin?
Aye.
This is Effernan?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mr. Lydic?
Aye.
Brings us to eight recommendations. A, adapted aquatics agreement, Cogga Falls and Auditorium, 2024, 2025 school year. Get a motion, please.
I'll move. I'll second.
Discussion.
This is the agreement we have for our students with more intensive needs, so they learn about water safety, water experiences, and really support some therapeutic needs as well.
Roll call, please.
This is Effernan?
Aye.
This is Martin?
Aye.
This is Glover?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mr. Lydic?
Aye.
Brings us to B, in lieu of transportation stipend, 2024, 2025 school year. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll move.
I'll second. Discussion.
And just, you know, as far as students that attend private schools and we're unable to transport them, so this is in lieu of that payment.
Roll call, please.
This is Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Lydic?
Aye.
This is Glover?
Aye.
This is Effernan?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
C, game helpers. Get a motion, please.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Discussion.
This is just a revised list of our game helpers.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
This is Martin?
Aye.
This is Effernan?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mr. Lydic?
Aye.
Number nine, finance. A, purchase orders?
I'll move.
I'll second. Discussion.
So Jefferson ESC is what we use to help with our, the Winter Virtual Academy, and we just did not get a purchase order in place by the time school started, and we just missed it, so I'm asking for approval on this, since I already got a bill.
Roll call, please.
This is Effernan?
Aye.
Mr. Lydic?
Aye.
This is Glover?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
This is Martin?
Aye.
B, inventory deletion. I'll move.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Getting rid of the lawnmower?
Oh, I'm sorry. So we, we had a lawnmower that kind of did the dust, in a nicer term, so we're getting a new one, and we're able to get a $1,500 trade-in value, they're just going to use it for parts and scrap, but we're able to get something out of it, other than just pitching it, so we'll be trading it and purchase a new one.
Thanks.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Lydic?
Aye.
This is Glover?
Aye.
This is Effernan?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
This is Martin?
Aye.
Brings us to C, Student Activity Program, Purpose Goals and Proposed Budgets. Get a motion, please.
I'll move.
Discussion.
So this is our annual resolution, where everyone turns in their student activity forms, listing their purpose and goals of what they're going to do, and their proposed budgets that I've given you, listing their cash balance, what they project at the end of the year with their different revenues and expenditures.
Roll call, please.
This is Glover?
Aye.
This is Martin?
Aye.
This is Effernan?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mr. Lydic?
Aye.
At this time, number 10, I have no public participation, and I will move that we go into executive session. It is recommended that the Board enter into executive session as permitted by Section 121.22 G5 of the Ohio Revised Code to consider matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulation or state statutes. This motion concerns an appeal under RC 3313.66. Get a motion, please.
I'll move. Second.
Roll call.
This is Effernan?
Aye.
This is Martin?
Aye.
This is Glover?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mr. Lydic?
Aye.
Six, seven, seven. Public session. Get a motion, please.
I'll move.
Get a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
This is Effernan?
Aye.
This is Martin?
Aye.
This is Glover?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mr. Lydic?
Aye.
We are now on record. The date is October 15th, 2024. It is approximately 7:13 PM. I am David Lydic, and I am the president of the Woodruff's Local School District Board of Education. We will consider the appeal of the suspension of Blake Williams pursuant to Section 3313.66 of the Ohio Revised Code and Board Policies. We will be making a verbatim record of this hearing by tape recorder. The parents have requested a public hearing. The Board's legal counsel is here to advise the Board as to procedure and to ensure a complete record. I will now ask the student and his parents to identify, identify themselves by name and address for the record.
Firstly, good evening, everyone. My name is Nick Olaski. I represent the Williamses, all of them, and Halle, and Lauren Zaptan. I have five, I have Blake Williams sitting at the table with me, and his parents are typing. So if you could identify yourselves and say your address.
Derek Williams, 3562 Kaiser Parkway in Cogga Falls.
And who's with you?
My wife, Ann Williams, at the same address, and my son, Blake, same address.
At this time, would your representation please identify themselves with their full name and address for record?
I jumped the gun. Nicholas Olaski and Lauren Zaptan of the law firm McCarthy, Levitt, Crystal &amp; Lifman. Our address is 1111 Superior Avenue, Suite 2700, Cleveland, Ohio, 44114.
I will now ask everyone who is present to identify him or herself by name and possession for the record. Everyone else.
RJ Ronchell sits in principal, Rich High School.
Board individuals provide testimony or answer questions. They will be asked to take a simple oath, which our attorney or notary public will administer. Witnesses will be asked clarifying questions by the parents or the representatives, but not both, by the administrator or administrators who are present and by board members and board counsel. Both parties should note that this is an appeal and not a rehearing of the suspension decision. This hearing will be conducted in the following manner. The administration will be asked to make a brief statement and provide any exhibits they have in support of the suspension. The administrators who testify then may be asked clarifying questions by the parent and/or his or her representative and by board members and board counsel. The parents or their representatives then may make a brief statement, call any witnesses, and offer documents as exhibits against the suspension. Any witness may be asked clarifying questions by the administrator who is present and by board and board counsel. The administration then may offer a response to the parent's presentation. The parents or their representative will be given a final opportunity to respond and present other arguments or evidence. Both sides will have the opportunity to make a closing statement. The board will then deliberate an executive session before acting on this appeal in public session. We expect to vote on a motion tonight. The board may act to affirm, reverse, vacate, or modify the suspension. The parents, superintendent, and principal will receive a written notice of the board's action after tonight. If procedural or legal questions or issues arise during the hearing, I may call upon board counsel for advice with regard to appropriate procedure and legality before rendering a decision. RJ and Al, are you ready to proceed?
Yes.
Our attorney or notary public, our attorney will give you your oath.
So I would ask that anyone who plans to testify for the administration or for the family, at this time, I'd like to administer the oath to all witnesses. So anyone who is going to testify or offer a statement, would you please stand? Here's the oath. Do you swear to affirm, to tell the truth, the whole truth, or in nothing but the truth? Please answer. Thank you.
Proceed.
I'm here with Mr. Dietzmaso. I will explain the reasons for Blake's suspension. As I do so, I'm going to revert to a packet that I'm about to hand out that will support my decision. I'll give each of you a copy, and I will go through what's in this document. So before I begin, if you would just follow along with me in your packet. The first page is Blake's written statement after the Woodruff West Branch football game. Date is September 3rd. The second thing that you'll see in there, number two, is Blake's notice of removal and/or intention to suspend. The third item in our folder here is the letter to Mr. and Mrs. Williams stating an out-of-school suspension, including proposed reduction from 10 days to five if a student completes Saturday family workshop. On the fourth page, you have the relevant parts of the Woodruff High School handbook, including Rule 22 and Rule 34. Exhibit 5 is a letter to the Williams stating the result of the suspension appeal that was held on September 16th. The sixth page in there is the notice of denial of athletic participation. And seven is the Williams family's electronic signatures acknowledging the student handbook. And then number eight includes the relevant parts of the Woodruff High School student activity handbook, including a penalty on the twelve. So what we have is on Friday, August 30th, Blake attended the away football game between Woodruff and West Branch. West Branch is about an hour away from us in Oak County. Mr. Dietzmaso was at the game as the administrator. We send administrators to all of our away contests in case something arises. And at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Dietzmaso to state what had happened that evening for the record. Thank you. I'm Albert Dietzmaso, principal of Woodruff High School. As Mr. Bronchild said, I was at the football game on Friday, August 30th. That West Branch is about an hour away. After halftime, two officers from the Goshen PD asked a student who was sitting near me to follow them. I introduced myself as the principal and walked with the police. It was at that point when I learned some of our students had been drinking.
Just for the record, is a continuing objection to Mr. Dietzmaso testifying about what he learned or what officers from the Goshen Police Department told him?
Continuing objection is noted. I would advise both parties that the rules of evidence do not strictly apply to this proceeding. Please.
Police officers have already assessed who was drinking and who was not. I walked with the officers to the car, to the car, to the parking lot. As we arrived at the car, Blake Williams is sitting head down, back against the car with his shirt on. As the officers were talking with Blake, his words were slurred. There were multiple officers, including a lieutenant on the scene. The lieutenant spoke with Blake's mother and aunt while they were talking. Blake threw up on his shoulder. When this happened, I heard her say, "It serves him right." Just prior to that, the EMTs were called. And once a three-member EMT unit crew arrived, they assessed Blake. I was not able to hear the EMT as I was pulled into other conversations. But after it was confirmed that Blake's father would pick him up, he was transported to the Goshen Police Department. Based on Blake's behavior, including his slurred speech and vomiting, I concluded he showed evidence of use of alcohol. My conclusion was based on my ears, administrator told me yours, experience as educator. It was also based on the Goshen PD and the EMT's conclusion as first responders. Thank you. So on Tuesday, September 30th, was the first day we were back after Labor Day weekend. I had Blake come down to my office. During that meeting, I asked Blake for his written statement, which he wrote, and then as he got sent it on in your folder. During our meeting, Blake also voluntarily admitted that he used alcohol before the West Branch football game. At no time has Blake ever denied the use of alcohol before the football game. He has also never denied that he showed evidence of alcohol use. During our meeting, I called the athletic director, who explained, he came into my office, and he explained the athletic consequences to Blake since he was a member of the basketball team. The athletic consequences are separate from school discipline. Under the student handbook, families may appeal an out-of-school suspension to the Board of Education. Under the Athletic Code of Conduct, parents do not have the right to appeal athletic consequences to the board. During my meeting with Blake, I gave him notice of intent, which is exhibit 2 in your folder. The form states my intent to give Blake a 10-day out-of-school suspension. The form also notes that he will not be allowed to attend extracurricular events such as football games, dances for the remainder of the year. As with athletics, students do not have a right to attend extracurricular. After the meeting, I contacted Mr. Williams. He was upset that Blake could not attend the homecoming dance and other football games. During my call with Mr. Williams, I explained the district would reduce the intent to suspend out-of-school from 10 days to five, and we would reduce the extracurricular consequences of attending dances and other events at the start of the second semester. I also told Mr. Williams that these reductions would happen if Blake and his parents completed the Saturday family workshop. After this meeting, I sent Mr. and Mrs. Williams the letter in exhibit 3, which notified them of Blake's out-of-school suspension. The family attended the Saturday family workshops, so the out-of-school suspension was reduced to five days, and the extracurricular consequences for attending events can start at the second semester. The last sentence of the page, number one of the notice begins, "You have the right to appeal the suspension." Blake's out-of-school suspension was based on Rule 22 and Rule 34 of the Code of Conduct in the Woodruff High School handbook, which is exhibit 4. Since Blake's misconduct involved the use of alcohol and showing evidence of use of alcohol, the discipline in Rule 34 applied. As mentioned, the family may appeal an out-of-school suspensions. The Williams family did this in a hearing with Assistant Superintendent Joel Morgan happened. During the hearing, the parents never denied Blake's misbehavior, but claimed that the discipline was too strict. The parents objected to the length of the out-of-school suspension, but they did not claim any procedural defects. The parents also tried to object to both the extracurricular consequences and the athletic denial of participation, even though the right to appeal to Mr. Morgan only applied to the out-of-school suspension. Mr. Morgan issued a letter with a decision to uphold the suspension on September 19th, and that is exhibit number 5 in your packet. The hearing with Mr. Morgan was recorded. The family should have received a copy of the recording, and I have a copy on a flash drive here. The board needs to hear that. For the sake of background only, in Blake's, parents mentioned his denial of athletic participation, the notice of his denial of participation. The family did sign that, which is exhibit 6, 7, and 8. Blake, at this point, was told and expected to attend all practices, open gyms, but that athletic denial will be 50% of the season, according to the Athletic Handbook. Currently, Blake has taken a very tough schedule of courses. We don't have access to his two CCP classes through Kent State, but he is maintaining a weighted D average in his classes. Again, it's important to understand the family has a right to appeal only Blake's out-of-school suspension. That concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions that you have.
Does the board have any questions? Again, it's important to understand the family has a right to appeal only Blake's out-of-school suspension. That concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions that you have. Does the board have any questions? At this time, I'd like to ask the family if they have any questions.
I do. Mr. Dietzmaso?
Yes.
Did I just pronounce your name at any point? Just let me know. West Branch is about an hour away from here, correct?
Yes.
It was an away football game, yes? To the best of your knowledge, Blake didn't arrive at the game on a school bus, right?
Of course not.
And you, the reason you got pulled away from the stands to watch the game is because police officers, you know, asked you in stepway, right?
Yes.
You never observed my client consuming any alcohol, right? And you never directly spoke with my client on August 30th, 2024. Is that fair?
That's fair. Are you talking about the parking lot? Yes.
Well, you would not have interacted with him otherwise than when we saw him in the parking lot, right?
Yes. Okay. I mean, I knew the students were there.
So the basis for your conclusion that Mr. Williams was drinking is essentially second-hand information that you obtained from police officers in the EMT, right?
If I may ask a clarifying question. Mr. Dietzmaso, I'd like you to look at Rule 34, which appears to be in the administration's exhibit 4. Let me know when you've found that.
Yep.
Okay. If you go to the second paragraph, does this rule apply in situations? Tell me whether or not it applies in situations where students show evidence of use of alcohol.
Could you ask that again?
Does this rule, Rule 34.4, can you tell me whether or not it applies in a situation where a student shows evidence of use of alcohol?
Yes.
And can you tell me whether or not this was the rule? Actually, this is a question for Mr. Bronchild, if I'm pronouncing your name correctly.
Yes.
Is this the rule that you relied on? I believe you already told us, but is this the rule you relied on?
Yes.
For the out-of-school suspension. Thanks. Counsel, you may go ahead.
Mr. Dietzmaso, are you familiar with, well, in general, you're familiar with the fact that the board publishes policies, right?
Yes.
Written policies, right?
Yes.
That govern how students act, right?
Yes.
And governs, too, how administrators in the district should act as well, right?
Yes.
You agree that there's a process to follow when, that the board publishes when the school wants to or the administration wants to suspend a student, right?
Yes.
Are you familiar with Board Policy 56.8?
No.
So I'd like to interrupt for just a moment. You're going to have an opportunity to present your case later this evening. You're certainly welcome to ask the witness questions, but I'd ask you to hold off on introducing your exhibits until you present your case.
Well, I guess, for the sake of efficiency, I think it's just easier for me to examine this witness one time as opposed to having him present his evidence and then...
He's answered your question about the policy.
Well, I'm going to show him the policy.
Go ahead. I think, you know, we'll allow a certain amount of latitude for this, but remember, this is not subject to formal rules of evidence. This is not an evidentiary hearing in the sense that there's full cross-examination. You have an opportunity to ask some questions, just as the administration and board members will have an opportunity to ask questions of your clients, but it's limited in scope.
I have two or three more questions, Mr. Dietzmaso.
Go ahead.
I'm handing you what we, our exhibit G in our binder, which is a copy of... And I ask you, if you could read out loud the third paragraph, in which the students may be subject to discipline.
Students may be subject to discipline for violation of student code of conduct, student discipline code, even if that conduct occurs on property not owned or controlled by the board, but where such conduct is connected to activities or incidents that have occurred on property owned or controlled by the board, or conduct that, regardless of where it occurs, is directed at a district official employee or the property of such official employee.
You would agree that my client's conduct was not directed at a district official, right?
You have to restate that.
Sure. Well, if this is the board's policy, so I'm asking you. Is Mr. Williams's conduct on alleged conduct on August 30th, 2024, was not directed at you, right?
Sure.
And you were the only district official that was present at the game, right? And you would agree that the board and the district don't own any property at West Branch High School, right?
I haven't been to the picture of six.
I mean, it's an hour away from here, so it'd be surprising if the district did own any property in West Branch, right?
Seems reasonable.
All right. I don't have any further questions from Mr. Dietzmaso. I just do have a few for Mr. Bronchild. You spoke a little earlier about September 3rd, 2024, right? You called Mr. Williams into your office early in the morning on that day, right?
Yes.
Do you know approximately the time?
Around 10 o'clock maybe before.
And Mr. Mayor, the athletic director, was with you, right?
Wouldn't I have called him into the office? No, later on, I had Mr. Mayor come into the office.
But either way, there were three people present for this interaction. You, Mr. Mayor, Blake.
No, the hearing I actually did was just Blake and I, and Mr. Mayor came in later because he explained the Athletic Code of Conduct.
Fair enough. Prior to you calling Mr. Williams into your office, you didn't provide anything in writing to Mr. Williams or his family, right?
No, I provided it to him, yes. That's the form here that I've shown you on number two.
Right. You provided that form to Mr. Williams.
I was talking about Blake when you said that.
Yes, I'm sorry.
It's fine.
You provided that form, which is, I think, exhibit?
Two.
Two in your folder?
Yes.
To Blake on September 3rd, 2024.
Yep.
When did you, in relation to Blake coming into your office, when did you present him that form?
When he came in, I read through the two rules, and it was written on there as far as the violation of Code of Conduct, and that's when I asked him to write his statement.
You agree that board policy requires you to give a student notice in writing of your intenses as fat in both prior to and in form of the hearing, right?
That's what we did there in my office, yes.
So you handed him the piece of paper, the notice of intenses as fat, and...
I read through the notice of intenses as fat. I asked him for his statement as soon as possible.
So it all happened roughly simultaneously, right?
Not simultaneously. There was me reading a backdoor and through stuff, and then I asked him for his statement.
You spoke about, there are three... You spoke about, there are three punishments that Blake faced because of his conduct, or alleged conduct on August 30th, right? You have the out-of-school suspension, agree?
Yes.
You have suspension from basketball, agree?
That's the athletic part, so I'd say, yes.
And then third is the suspension of extracurricular activities.
It's not a suspension from extracurriculars, but students who are suspended are not permitted to attend extracurriculars.
And you would agree that all three of those punishments flow from the fact that Blake was suspended for his conduct on August 30th?
Yes.
And absent a suspension for his conduct on August 30th, he wouldn't be facing any of those three punishments, agree?
Can you restate that? I'm sorry.
Sure. If Blake were not suspended, did that receive an out-of-school suspension for his conduct, for alleged conduct on August 30th, he would not be facing any of those three punishments, agree?
If he wasn't suspended, like if I didn't suspend him but knew that this happened, or he didn't receive any consequences?
If ultimately, he was not suspended?
Yes, if student's not suspended, they don't have to sit out an extracurricular.
Correct. And your position is that the board could rescind or vacate the out-of-school suspension, right?
That's what the UCF said.
But if the board decided to do that, the board couldn't do anything with the other two punishments?
That's not what this hearing is about, as far as I'm understanding.
All right. Understood. I mean, I have a moment to confer. Nothing further at this time.
At this point, does the administration have anything else to add?
No.
At this time, we'll turn it over to the family and their representatives.
I call Derek Williams. Derek, Blake is your son?
Yes, correct.
Is he your biological son?
No, we adopted him as a little bottom model.
How long has been, and your wife, Anne, is next to you?
Yes.
How long have you been married?
Twenty-five years.
How many kids do you have?
We have two, Blake's younger brother and Eric.
And did Eric attend Woodbridge?
Yes, Eric graduated last year.
Prior to August of 2024, how was Blake as a student?
As and Bs, mostly As and Bs, maybe a C that's up here there, but mostly As and Bs.
Does Blake, did Blake participate in any sports at Woodbridge?
Yeah, Blake's been involved. He did football for a year in the focus league, and then he's done basketball all of his three years, two years thus far, and then track and field last year.
Currently, what grade is Blake now?
Blake is junior.
Did you or your wife receive any notice, try to, when did you receive notice that Blake was going to be suspended?
Mr. Brant called later that Tuesday and basically told me the charges. I didn't know whether a meeting or anything.
And by later on Tuesday, so you're understanding that that call occurred after Mr. Bronschidel's meeting with Blake?
Yes.
Has Blake served any part of the suspension?
Yeah, he served the five days out-of-school suspension, pretty much immediately, but Wednesday after I had the meetings, but Wednesday on through next week, he served the five days. And we also attended, myself and Blake, attended Saturday family workshop.
Well, you heard me mention there are essentially three punishments at issue here, right?
Yeah.
How has the, how have those punishments affected Blake going forward?
I mean, it's, I mean, devastating. I mean, the kid goes to school, and school's his job, and extracurriculars, social life with school friends is his life. So when he was told, and we were told, it was banning from all extracurriculars for the whole school year, in the first report, and then also with all of basketball, it was originally all of basketball. I mean, basketball is his love. It's what he's done since he was little. It is the only sport he plays at. And in my mind, they were telling everything from him, and it is impacted. I mean, there's no doubt, his grades are Ds. He's never gotten Ds. He sleeps during the day because he's sad. He had a hard time going to school. He tells me he'll have waves of depression when he's at school, or waves of anxiety and nervousness, and I just can't imagine, if it was me, and I'm an adult, and basically my whole life was taken away, how would I respond? I mean, it's definitely impacted.
And you and your wife appealed the suspension, right?
Yes.
And at that time, were you represented by legal counsel?
No. We were open to his office reasonably and rationally.
And at the time of that appeal hearing, was it your understanding that you were appealing all three punishments?
Yes.
And at the appeal hearing, was it your understanding that Assistant Superintendent Morgan was considering whether to vacate or modify the extracurricular and the basketball suspensions?
It wasn't until maybe roughly halfway through, or when he started just focusing solely on the five days, and I was like, he's already served the five days. We're having an appeal after he's already served it. Why would we be appealing five days? He's already done the time. So like, my mind, I was floored that he couldn't appeal the school.
And to that point, since that appeal hearing and the appeal decision, you retained the legal counsel, right?
Yes.
Even though Blake has already served the five-day suspension, out-of-school suspension, right?
And he hasn't attended the class and that stuff, too.
So why are you, why did you take those steps? Why are you appealing, given that he's already served the suspension?
School needs to know that what they're doing to kids, teenagers that are trying to figure out life and have insecurities and don't know what they're doing, like, their actions affect them. Kids will put on a front, they'll come to school and try to act like it's okay, but they're eating up inside, and it's, we see it, and quite frequently, I'm just ashamed and embarrassed that the school doesn't realize what their actions can do.
Well, one of the exhibits that the district presented was your, one of your signatures on Blake's on the student-athlete handbook, right?
Yes.
Have you reviewed that handbook?
Now, afterwards.
And you're aware there are other handbooks that the school publishes, right?
Yep.
And there's four policies too, right?
Yes.
Do you find those policies confusing?
Very.
Do you find some of those policies contradictory?
Extremely contradictory.
When Blake received the suspension, do you know one way or the other whether the school consulted with a care coordinator?
No, she was clueless that his punishment, multiple weeks after the fact.
And what is a care coordinator?
Now that we've learned about this, she's supposed to be by his side through this and help with determining what punishments are, in my mind, fair and reasonable and aren't going to impact his well-being.
And was it your understanding that the school was obligated to consult with a care coordinator in terms of imposing the discipline?
Yes.
Since Blake's suspension, have you undertaken your own steps to investigate whether Blake's punishment is disproportionate to other punishments that may have been issued by the district?
Yes.
And what was your conclusion?
I mean, we've spoken to multiple individuals, both in other schools and the suspension part is somewhat typical, but everything else is. The most impactful statement is the Saturday family workshop. The lady that runs that said in 25 years of doing it, she's never seen a punishment this severe and this harsh. And she has Woodbridge kids, she said she's had Woodbridge kids come through her class, and she was appalled. And all the facilitators there don't understand how banning a kid from extracurriculars is beneficial in any way. They just...
If I could interrupt for just a minute, I'd remind legal counsel that earlier in this hearing, you had an objection and then a continuing objection about what you characterized as hearsay testimony, as with the statements from the administrators that potentially may be hearsay. The board will allow this evidence into the record in summary form and then consider it with whatever weight it's due to get. So I would ask for you to move on at this point.
I don't have anything further for Derek. At this time, we passed out a binder. I would proffer those exhibits into the record and ask the board to consider them. We sent a position statement along with the exhibits to legal counsel for the board earlier, which is what is in the binders, just for purposes of the record. And I think that some of these exhibits are duplicative of the district's exhibits, but nevertheless. Exhibit A is a copy of my letter to the district notifying that I represent Blake. Exhibits B1 and B2 are records we received from the district, were Blake's student records, including the disciplinary records related to the incident that occurred on August 30th. Exhibit C is a rough transcript from the appeal hearing before Assistant Superintendent Morgan.
May I ask a question about that? And just so the board understands, a proffer is a request that these exhibits become part of the record. It's not making any determination about the relevance of these exhibits. It's just asking that it goes in front of the board. But a specific question with, first with the whole packet, you said this was communicated to the district this afternoon. Could you say about what time these records were sent?
I believe mid to late afternoon, approximately.
I'm not asking you to testify, but it's approximately 4 o'clock, about right?
I frankly don't know. I wasn't the one who had the consent.
And then with this transcription, is this a record that you got from the district?
No, that's a record that I created, my office created, simply for purposes of ease in terms of the transcript that's ultimately, as opposed to listening to the audio recording.
So it's a transcription from your office of the recording?
Correct.
It's not a record of the school district itself?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Exhibit D is an article about examination of the effects of school suspensions. Exhibit E is a copy of the student handbook. District's exhibit. Exhibit F is a copy of the student-athlete handbook. Exhibit G is a copy of Board Policy 56-10. Exhibit H is a copy of Board Policy 56-11, and Exhibit I is a copy of Board Policy 55-30. And so at this time, I'd ask that those exhibits be seen as evidence or considered by the board. I don't have any further evidence to proffer at this time with like the opportunity to make brief argument.
At this time, does the administration have any clarifying questions?
No.
I do have one question for perhaps Mr. Bronschidel, and then perhaps one for Mr. Di Tomaso. Just to make sure that it's clear, does the district have, does the high school, rather, have a separate athletic code of conduct that is separate from the student handbook's code of conduct?
Yes.
And is it possible for an offense to result in a violation of the athletic code, even if it does not happen to violate the student handbook?
Yes.
Thank you. The question for Mr. Di Tomaso. If you look again at what the Williams family has introduced as Exhibit G in their book, it's Board Policy 56-10. Tell me when you have that open, if you're looking at that. Okay. Here is my question. It goes back to the third paragraph that the family's counsel had you look at a bit earlier. The question is, can you say whether or not the football program is an activity connected with or occurring on property owned or controlled by the board? Or to put it a little differently, can you say whether or not the football program is part of your school's offering, extracurricular offerings?
Yes.
Thank you.
At this time, does the board have any questions?
No.
I would ask each of you if you would want to make a closing statement summarizing your position before we excuse you and deliberate in executive session.
Yes.
I would offer to counsel your cert- I would offer to counsel, you're certainly welcome to give a closing statement, but please be mindful you've not been sworn in as a witness.
I don't, I never intended to testify. This is about due process, that by notice and an opportunity to be heard, that just as the district and the board publish policies that they expect their students to follow, students should expect the district to follow its policies. That didn't happen here. These suspensions should be vacated because the district didn't follow the policies. The district didn't follow Board Policy 5611, which you can look at, which talks about how the process is initiated for giving a student notice of the intent to suspend. The notice has to be given in writing to the student and then the student has to afford the opportunity and for an informal hearing to explain his or her conduct. That didn't happen here. What happened is Blake was called into Mr. Bronchett's office early in the morning on September 3rd, presented with a piece of paper saying, "I intend to suspend you." And then two minutes later, Blake is supposed to give his side of the story. That's not, that's not a notice and an opportunity to be heard. For that reason alone, the suspension should be overturned. The suspension should be overturned too because of Board Policy 5611. The board, the district lacks jurisdiction to impose punishment on Blake because that conduct didn't occur on property owned or controlled by the district. This board would be setting a dangerous policy by upholding the suspension for a conduct that occurred an hour away in West Branch. I'd also point, you know, the district to Board Policy 5530.02, which talks about the district's requirement to have a care coordinator consulted when imposing punishment related to chemicals or substance abuse. Again, testimony was that didn't happen here. And lastly, you've heard some argument from the district that this board lacks the power to vacate the basketball suspension and the extracurricular suspension. I think again, it's a dangerous policy for this board to follow, to say that it is powerless to stop school administrators from imposing arbitrary punishments. I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair to say that this board has the power to vacate a 10-day out-of-school suspension, but it lacks the power to tell the district to allow Blake to attend prom? That can't be this board's policy. And lastly, I just want to emphasize the disproportionate and punitive nature of the suspension. You heard Derek testify about the effect of this suspension and the consequences it had. No doubt if Blake did what the school has alleged that he did, that's, you know, poor conduct and something that he has to learn from. But the purpose of punishment is not just punitive, which is all this punishment is, it's also just rehabilitative, it should be restored, to teach Blake how to move forward. Instead, Blake is isolated. You heard Derek testify about how the basketball suspension affects him, the fact that there's an extracurricular suspension that prohibits him from doing all sorts of things after school. Again, I think that this board should consider what is an appropriate punishment, which can't just be punitive, it has to be rehabilitative as well. And lastly, I want to emphasize how important this appeal is. Blake has already served the five-day out-of-school suspension. Even if this board vacates that suspension, it can't, obviously can't give him back those five days that he has. We're here ultimately to make sure that the district follows its policies in the future. We're here to make sure that students in the future are given due process. That's why this is so important. Because again, you can't give Blake those five days back. But you do have the power to ensure that school administrators in the future follow their policies, that they give students due process, and you also have the power to give Blake back his junior year, so he can attend basketball and attend extracurricular activities. That's in your hands. And again, emphasize how important that is for a 17-year-old kid who's prohibited from participating in athletics, extracurriculars, because he may have had a drink at a high school football game an hour away from here on a Friday night. This board would be setting a dangerous precedent in not vacating the suspension. Thank you.
Mr. Blake, can I have a response to some of that?
Effernan.
So we're in the unfortunate position as administrators to be, you know, painted as somehow bad in this case. And I'm going to speak for RJ. We're ready to do our jobs for that. I would also say that you used the word arbitrary. Nothing is worthy for the truth. It's hardly arbitrary to suggest that when something does occur, we follow our rules in order to enforce our policies that have been established long, long before we were here. Also, to suggest is disproportionate. I suppose that's subjective, but I would also say that there are other schools, even in our conference, who have 50% initial and all year around.
Mr. Di Tomaso, I do want to interject and just let you, make sure you understand we're talking about Woodbridge's policies here today.
I understand. Also, I want to make sure that we're putting on and also suggesting that, you know, other schools don't do what we do. And the next part and the most important part is, is that we are not, at least in our environment today, our school for sure, but other schools are no longer in this just leave and get out of the building moment. That's not the case. We are, we are working with restorative practices in order to work with students. And by the way, what we've done here in terms of counselors, in terms of policies of board teachers, mentors, you know, working with schools, working with other schools and making sure we have coordinating efforts to make sure students are, you know, combined and talking and working together, not to mention the fact that, you know, the idea that it's allowable to be continuing to stay on the team, to be a part of the team, to practice with the team, to remain with the friends, is something that is incredibly important. It would have been simple for a district to simply say, "You are done in out-of-school for 10 days. You are done with, you know, done with students." It would have been easy. That's not, that's not the case here. And also, you know, I know there's so much support for Blake. I would include RJ and I in that support. If you were to ask us, if you were to ask us how we feel about Blake, and quite frankly, and Derek, how we feel about Eric, you would find that we do truly care about the well-being of your son, so. Whether you're alive or die, I'm just suggesting to everybody that you're here in order to make sure we help.
Having heard the evidence and arguments, the board will now stay in executive, go into executive session to deliberate before we make our decision. We expect to take action tonight in public session. You are welcome to wait for us, but it may be quite a while before we return to vote. Is there anything further? If not, this hearing is concluded.
No.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session. It is recommended that the board enter into the executive session as permitted by Section 121.22-G5 of the Ohio Revital Code to consider matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes. This motion concerns an appeal under RC 3313.66. Get a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Mrs. Effernan?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
I move to return to public session. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Effernan?
Aye.
Mrs. Merkle?
Aye.
I move that the board approve the following resolution. Whereas the Board of Education held an appeal hearing on October 15th, 2024, in student suspension case number 2024-001. Whereas the Board of Education had opportunity to consider presentations from the family's representatives and the administration and other relative information. Whereas this case concerns student information, which is required to be kept confidential pursuant to state and federal law, therefore be it resolved by the Woodbridge Local School District Board of Education, that the family's appeal has been denied and the decision in the case number 2024-001 is affirmed. Be it further resolved that the conclusions shared with the board in executive session incorporated herein by reference are adopted and approved. Be it further resolved that the board president shall provide written notice to the family and administration of the Board of Education's adoption of this resolution and a copy of the board's conclusion. Let me get a second, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Effernan?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
I will move to adjourn.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Mrs. Effernan?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.